All right, good evening everybody, it's eight thirty, we'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is to approve the agenda and I just want to note that our administrator's out today and Lori Johnson sent a message up that she doesn't really have anything to add based on last week's budget discussions, so unless the board has questions of themselves today, we'll just leave that off until next week. So item number eight will be off the agenda today. And then if there could be a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. We have no citizens in the audience today unless Stephen wants to talk as a citizen. And we'll move to the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carried. And then at this point today, we also have another, we want to recognize another contribution that was given today from the Clay County Fair to the, for the sheriff's work detail in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. We just want to acknowledge the Clay County Fair and thank them for that. And I'm assuming they get a good amount of work from the sheriff's work detail.
Yeah, they're out there a lot.
Yeah. So thank you to them for that contribution. Okay, our eight thirty-five item is consideration for quote for payment of landfill. Kirk should be in here. I'm assuming he knows he's on the agenda?
Yes, he does.
There he goes. No. Do you want to see if Kirk's there? He's, we're two minutes ahead, but... All right, Stephen, why don't you come up? We're going to take yours. You're ready to go here. I know we're a few minutes late, but...
Good morning.
Yep. Good morning, Stephen.
Mr. Chair, as you recall, I was here recently requesting permission to utilize the Cass County eleven-bed facility that Cass County offered to utilize for our overflow services. Part of that required us to do some, some work with the Department of Corrections and getting a variance to all those initial up to eleven kids into our facility during the day time period from roughly anywhere from ten in the morning until, until, until six-thirty at night. We've received our initial approval from the Department of Corrections to grant that variance. This board also asked me to look into insurance, insurance and also an operating contract. And we did check with MCIT. Passing information, Jenny and Jenny did confirm that our MCIT insurance would cover our staff and, and the program in North Dakota. And we're in the process of, right now, of working with North Dakota on the conditional use offer of the, of the facility or the contract. And hopefully, hopefully we'll have something before this board very soon. But in lieu of hoping to get in there by October, one of the things that we'll be requesting today is part of the discussion of opening the site was to bring on additional full-time staff members to help operate that and take on the additional youth. And so today I'm here requesting to permission to hire four full-time staff. Two of those positions would be day and evening, two of those would be overnight staff. And we would request to be able to interview, advertise an interview with the understanding that we wouldn't offer any jobs until we were in a situation where we, we had that agreement before this board. And the, just to clarify too, in, in that agreement, it is, they, they have offered it to us at rent-free. The initial verbiage that they provided is that it is rent-free. They're going to cover all utilities, they're going to maintain the, the site, other locks, security. And so it, it does really truly look like it's going to be a free, a free offering from Cass County, so...
Stephen, we had, we had our West Central meeting here last week.
Yes.
And this, this was presented again to them. They, we'd certainly, we talked to them about it before. And it, it really has the full support of the, of the entire group. One of the things to note, the new hire, we're hoping if all the, we get the final approval by this board and by Jenny, your approval on this, on this agreement with Cass County, we'd be looking at in the area of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in, in costs between October fifteenth and December thirty-first. And we've already, there was actually a resolution made at our West Central meeting that stated whatever revenues do not show up from outside sources. I know we have the one from Pennington here that's now that, and if that stays, that's roughly forty-two thousand of the hundred and eleven. But, but what we talked about, and it was unanimously agreed upon, was that whatever difference, whatever revenues that we don't get, it will be the responsibility of the member counties who used more than their bed purchase price this year are going to have to make, have to make up that difference. Clay County could potentially be one of those counties. But certainly Otter Tail County, there's two counties that already have exceeded their, their daily beds. So we know for sure that it would be Otter Tail and I believe it's Wilken. They would be the responsible parties to make up the difference of any revenues. And that was voted on and approved by all, all the counties. So, so we've got that covered for the two thousand seventeen budget. And then the, the two thousand eighteen budget, it's also been, those, we're assuming that that would run like that the entire year for two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
And based on the review of the budget proposal for eighteen, that a hundred and eleven, because it's a whole year now, it goes up to roughly four hundred and fifty?
Five, fifty-two.
Okay, five. But those dollars, and we still anticipate we're going to have additional revenues coming in because of the extra beds available.
Our intent is not to be passing on any, any additional cost to our, to our members or to Clay County. That wasn't part of our initial budget that was presented back to this board in May.
And it's still, and it would still fit in with the bed purchase price for two thousand eighteen of the eighty-three-five.
Yep, that's correct.
So, and then we can, we can report a little bit more on, on some of the other discussions we had on long-term later on in our committee reports. But certainly for the board, you know, this is, it's prob, you know, we'd like to see that up and running so that we're not turning back. And so we, you know, we can't expect to hire these people on October fifteenth just like that. So we need, they have to have this process, so...
I'm moving to approve their question.
Okay, we have a motion, there's a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
What, I mean, do we need four people? Why don't we have two people to put over there, all right?
Well, the, basically, we're, from a safety perspective, we're required to have, you know, we're going to be utilizing part-time staff in addition to these four, probably about another ten thousand hours. So we're going to have an equivalent of about another four, four and a half full-time, or part-time FTEs. And so in the event that we don't need, we, we're, if we're operating at the Fargo, we have flexibility with those variables that we could cut some of those hours to, to save from the variable standpoint. And so that's part of our, part of our plan in the event that we, our numbers don't support being across the way. But I think we've kind of talked on a lot of different issues of always being, to be able to, at any, any time, being able to, to fill that, fill that program without having to try to find people. So that's kind of where our request is at today.
It's very similar to our jail. It's the same type of thing. You have your full-time employees and it takes that level of full-time employees, whether you have ninety inmates or a hundred and twenty inmates, they still, you can't send your employees home on a daily basis because we're, we've got less inmates.
Right.
We wouldn't have anybody wanting to work for us at that point.
And, and the, the other piece of this, commissioners, is that once our long-term plan is put into place, these people would just transfer into that. And so the Department of Corrections likes the idea, likes this option because it's, we'd be able to bring staff in in stages versus bringing all, everybody brand-new once the new facility went to open.
Not a new facility, a re...
A remodel.
What, what is the status of the workman's comp and the unemployment insurance is in, and withholding in North Dakota? If they're living in, or if they're working in North Dakota, do they have to file that in the state of North Dakota?
I don't believe so. They'd still be working for the state of, for the county, which is a state entity, or a state of Minnesota municipality, so...
Okay, doesn't matter where the location is?
No.
Okay.
They're employed, they're employed by us, so Minnesota employers, so... Okay, any further, any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Well, I hope this works, Steve. I hope we can ask to do that because it's, it's no, it's, it's not nice to having to turn member counties away.
No, it's not. I appreciate your guys' continued support, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Kurt notified me that this item number two was going to be pulled from the agenda because they didn't, they are going to go back out for quotes. They didn't like the quotes that they got. And they're probably looking at doing this sometime in the spring instead of this fall.
All right, so item number two has been scratched. All right, then we can move on to, anyway, again, Bruce is not here yet. We can't do our public hearing. Yeah, do you want to hear your report?
Yeah, thank you. Last week, I attended the Joint Powers Committee that was held at Delworth City Hall. There was some in-depth conversation on planning for the intergovernmental retreat and solidifying speakers that will be at the Marriott at the end of January. So make sure your calendars are open. And we did talk about future presentations for the upcoming meetings. I, I've been in discussion with Jenny and with the assessor's office, or not, the auditor's office and Kurt's township about a building in Kurt's township that has experienced a fire and is, is kind of becoming a public health nuisance. So we'll see what the township decides to do going forward on that. But it's kind of in their hands at this point. Last Friday, we had our buffer strip meeting to discuss the implementation with the Soil and Water District and the watershed, Commissioner Gross and I and other staff members were there to help discuss how we'll move forward on that. We've, everything that's, that's in the Buffalo Red watershed is, is pretty much, pretty much set with how they've done it going forward. I think they've got about sixty to seventy percent that's already in the, buffer strips have been put in. So it's basically discussing how we'll go forward with ditches and parcels that are in the Wild Rice watershed. And, and it's going to be tricky to kind of figure that out, but I think we've got a good plan. We will be asking to have a meeting with some members from the Wild Rice watershed just to let them know how, what we're planning going forward and see if they can offer any input or support. We did have some draft ordinance language that Jenny and Tim worked together and I think it's, it's looking pretty good. I think it's a living, breathing document at this point, but we'll go forward, so... Commissioner Gross can fill in anything that I may have forgotten. And then yesterday, I attended the law library meeting. Everything continues to go good there. It's exciting. We will be offering, I don't want to say legal advice, but have a guidance service that will, October first, be starting two weeks, two days a week, two hours a week in the law library just to kind of help guide people for questions that they may have on, on things. Finances look good. Access was down a little bit this summer, although we're kind of wondering if maybe that's due to the construction in the front. The jail numbers, access numbers continue to go up, which is good because I think sometimes that we've wondered how that, is it easily accessible? There was a, the balance in the excess account has gone down and that's been something that's continuing to, had been continuing to go up. So Elaine Beatlesbacher will look into that and let us know. But otherwise, everything else is pretty much net neutral for the quarter. And then I did attend a meeting yesterday with Representative Ben Lean to thank him for his support and talk about some solid waste help that we appreciate, but also just kind of keep him up to date on the projects that Clay County is going forward with. So I appreciate his presence in St. Paul. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our agenda item. And this is a discussion on the Clay County Water Lab. Bruce, Tim, you're going to, oh, Tim, you're going to come up too, all right?
Keep going around and giving you ideas of what the cost is on a daily basis.
And this is a follow-up to, Tim, to the discussion we had, was it at our last meeting?
Budget meeting.
Budget meeting?
Where...
We were talking about maybe just...
Mr. Berg would ask us to come up with places to cut money. And one of the ways we thought about doing that was looking at the water lab and just zeroing it out. And I guess today was kind of brought up by Bruce. He, he wanted to come to the board and if the board had any questions, you had brought it up at your last meeting where the budget discussions were going on. And Bruce just wanted to be available here to answer any questions you might have relative to the water lab.
I, I think Bruce, just to kind of summarize the discussion that we had, I think it was suggested that we just no longer have a water lab here at the county and that people would just have to...
Find a different lab.
Find, find their own lab. And, and, you know, I, I brought up the issue of why, why not still, if somebody else still comes, wants to come to the county, rather than, you know, we could probably help with that, is what would be my suggestion, but that we would have to charge them the equivalent for you to send everything out.
Well, and, and that's after Tim discussed your discussion from last week. That's why I thought it'd be a good, good to be here and kind of go through the process.
Okay.
Right now, we have to follow time, timeframes when we get the samples and when they're processed. So for like the bacteria tests, they have to be processed within thirty hours of sampling. So we already have a hard time with people getting their samples to us in time, let alone trying to get them to us and then ship them to a different lab. And with like with the nitrates, they have a forty-eight hour timeframe. So I don't, realistically, that probably wouldn't even be an option to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't know why it wouldn't, because right now, we, we have a water lab and we have to meet those right now. So why, that would be different.
Well, once they come to us, then we in turn would collect them and ship them to a different lab.
Mm-hmm. Which we, which we have to do now, don't we?
No.
So we, we would give all the results right there?
Yep, yep.
We can do the testing on...
Anybody that wants to use our lab brings their water sample into us.
Okay, I see, okay.
And then we, Monday through Thursday, we do the testing.
Okay, I, I was under the assumption that we sent them off before for the testing?
No, no. The only thing, we, we, we keep a supply of test kits for lead and arsenic. And we just tell the people that, you know, here's the sample container, here's the sample protocol paperwork, follow that and ship it to another lab in DL. There is...
So what it amounts to then is, is you're saying that, that in the past, we've just never, if we're going, there's an opportunity for the county to save money by disbanding the county doing it. And there's, there's one of two options that's gone on, what's happened in the past then is we've just never collected enough fees to cover the costs.
Correct.
That's what it boils down to.
Mm-hmm.
So that goes to the point where you either then increase your fees to keep the, the program sustainable for those who want it, or you don't do it.
Right.
That's really what we're looking at here.
Right, and, and, you know, this, some of the costs, increased costs that we're starting to, starting to incur is due to the fact that the state is requiring all these labs to, that want to be certified to meet NE Lac standards. We're required to do two PT studies a year versus one. We're required every other year to hire an auditor from, well, this year we had a guy from Louisiana come in. We have to find an auditor and pay all his expenses and everything else. And the NE Lac standards are designed for bigger labs. And that's why the smaller labs like ours are just saying, "Heck with it." We don't have the time and money to put into meeting your standards.
Can you, can you give us a little bit of background as to who, who have been the people who have been using this service at Clay County?
How to do that? In two thousand sixteen, we have eleven communities that regularly, either monthly or quarterly, use our lab. And in two thousand sixteen, we performed a hundred and sixty-one bacteria tests, a hundred and fifty-two nitrates, and then three hundred and twenty-eight community water samples.
I, I guess what I was, you know, if it's, if it was the board's wishes to discontinue that service, I was just thinking it would be probably nice to send out a communication to them that we're no longer doing it. Do you have, you have all those records where we could go to do that so that they know?
Yeah.
It's not a shock to them?
To the communities, we have, we'll have a list of, like, we'll send sample containers out to different extension offices in different counties. We have Head Start utilizes our lab for fluoride tests for, for their clientele. A lot of realtors utilize the lab.
Well, thank you for being here, Bruce. You kind of clarified some things for me.
Sure.
Is there a cost for when they come in and get tested?
Yes. It's fifteen dollars each for the nitrate and bacteria and twelve dollars for any of the other tests they may want done.
Or if they go to the, another place, is the cost comparable or...
Yep, that's, that's the thing with the cost. We've tried to keep it comparable with the one lab that's closest to us in DL and they're about at the same, same cost. The city of Fargo, at the water treatment plant, does have a lab. They are not Minnesota-certified. I don't know how that would play into somebody needing to dine with, or do all these samples need to be done in a state-certified lab? I knew the communities do. I'm not sure how that works with the mortgage companies.
So I think when, when Mr. Berg and Tim, when you guys were presenting it, weren't we looking at a potential of like eight or nine thousand dollar savings on this?
Well, zeroing it out is a, for this year, the budgeted amount for this year was just short of twenty-two thousand.
Well, that's, that's the, that's expenditures over revenues?
That was our expenditures.
Yeah, but when you had revenues coming in for a portion of it, but the actual net cost to the county...
Where...
Ten thousand a year.
Yeah, I was going to say, from the last nine years, it's been a little over ten thousand a year.
But I guess I, I don't know that I like hearing the fact of these requested changes from the state coming in, which put more burden on, on the county again, you know, so...
Well, the, the lab just went through an audit. Like Bruce said, you know, we, the state used to come and do the audits as part of the lab registration fee. They decided that, they kicked the fee up to twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-four hundred dollars a year and then decided they weren't going to do the audits anymore. So they were going to be nice to us, they dropped the certification, lab certification fee back down to a thousand dollars a year. But now every, every year, we have to incur the costs of finding, paying all the costs to find an auditor, certified by the state of Minnesota, to come up and audit the lab. And I think one of the problems that we've, we've noticed with that is that every time a new auditor comes up, you know, it's like a good attorney. They all see things differently. And, you know, when one leaves and you've got the lab up to snuff and the next one shows up and says, "Oh, that's all not right."
And we've just been, we were just notified by MDH that the audit has been placed on ELDO, which is the system that keeps track of all this stuff. So we have thirty days in which to respond.
I, I have one more question. You mentioned like, for example, like Head Start has certain things they do here, or has some testing done in. But whoever, I'm, I'm concerned about the Clay County customers who have been using the facility. And you said the nearest place right now is, if, if not us, it's Detroit Lakes.
And, and...
Now, do they, do, so do they have the ability to, they don't have to drive the DL? They can send the stuff to them in a script format, right, sir?
Yep, they can just contact them and they'd have to send them off their mailers and...
Okay.
And if it's, talking to the operator at the Fargo Water Lab, if somebody just wants their water sample, and it doesn't have to be done in a certified lab, they gladly do it all the time.
Okay. I know in the Lakes area, a lot of cabin owners do that exact thing, just...
Yep, yeah, in the spring of the year, we get busy with cabin owners bringing their, bringing their stuff in.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't know that, is, is it, from your standpoint, would there, is there anything? Because we're talking about this being implemented January one, right?
Right, right. And I guess we need, we need to determine whether we're going to keep the water lab because we're also coming up on the recertification, which would be a thousand dollars out the door.
Okay, well then, then you should consider, maybe consider that now then if you support it. Is it a direction you want to go?
If it's your advice, that it's something that is maybe costing us more than the benefit is, Bruce, you know that more than I, than I could. So if it, you know, if it, it's something that if we eliminate and in three years, we're hearing from everyone, this is really a pain in our neck. I mean, we could recertify and, and start it over. And, and if there wasn't something that was available by mail in Detroit Lakes, I would be a little more hesitant about it. But right now, I think it's a creative way to reduce the levy.
The, actually, the, the lab in Detroit Lakes is equipped to do many more analysis of the water than we are, so...
But when we say the mail to Detroit Lakes, I mean, you're not going to get it there, I don't think, in thirty hours, are you?
We run into that problem, we have this, Red Lake Falls has a problem getting their samples to us all the time. We have no control over the, over the mail delivery.
No, that's what I say, I don't, I don't think it's going to get there.
If they do, if they pay the extra money to overnight it, their chances are better.
Very good.
Or they drive it there.
I'm just concerned, I mean, when you read off the statistics of how many you do a year, that's a lot of people that are going to be affected. I mean, I agree, this is a good thing that you came up with as far as saving money, you know, but we are affecting a lot of people.
If you, if you want to make a change to the budget, we have two options. We either don't do it anymore or we increase the fees.
I mean, I look at other things that, I mean, if we take this water lab off, I mean, we're looking at space savings over there, you know?
Yeah, we haven't even considered that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's going to be another big thing. You know, we need space over there, so if there'd be another room, that's going to be available to rent out then. So it's just, I mean, there's more savings than just what you're seeing right here.
Well, I certainly like the comments that are made and we, you know, if we did hear from the public that there's an outcry for this service, we can certainly recertify it, it's something... It's something that could be done.
And the other option is, we would still keep the equipment for a period of time. If we got into a situation where the water samples that we tested did not have to be, come from a certified lab, I guess there's that option also.
Is there anything that through your food and beverage establishment inspections, and do we do anything with water testing in that regard?
Yep, we do. We have sixteen places in the county that would collect samples, so we will in turn now have to submit them to the same lab.
So we would, we would also send those to DL then? Okay. All right. What's the board's wishes? Or do you want to wait?
I'm in favor of eliminating it. I don't know if we need a motion, is, is part of your budget planning?
It's part of the budget that we submitted.
I don't know if we need a motion or consensus, what do you mean?
Well, I, you know, if we're going to, we're basically eliminating a service that we provided, and I think that should, that should take a motion.
I'll make a motion to eliminate the water lab from Tim's budget.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a second, and I just want to comment that I think that this is one of those things that the public has been subsidizing a service for individuals, and that's probably not something that we should-
The water lab has been, well, it started back in, I found a little history on it, in nineteen seventy-three, when it was the Morehead Public Health, and they used to do milk testing. And then, when it became Clay County Public Health, they moved it over, and they started doing water testing. So it, the service has been around for quite a while.
And when it comes to the public, we're, for example, through the food and beverage thing, we're going to still, on behalf of the citizens, make sure that those establishments have clean water.
Oh, yeah, we're required through our delegation.
Right, yeah, very good. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. If carried, we will, you can start that process and maybe work with Brian and whatever you need to do.
Okay.
And if, you know, I think the other point would be, I think, a letter to-
Oh, yeah.
To all these people.
That, that was one of the things, another thing other than the recertification was, we really need to notify people before the first of the year.
Great.
The sooner that can go out, the better.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we'll move into our nine o'clock public hearing, and this is a request from the, or action from the Planning Commission for rezoning of seven point six acres in the northwest quarter section of Moore Township.
Can you just open the panel?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearings.
All right, we have a motion and a second to open the hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. We are once again visiting the subject, and Mr. Magnus can start us off.
Let me start the hearing out by saying we have received a request from the applicants to postpone any action on this particular request until the, I believe, the second board meeting in October. That we can do, our review period, the sixty-day period, we have extended out to a hundred and twenty days, we can do that unilaterally. And that takes us out to November twentieth. The applicants have requested, they sent a request at the end of last week, that we postpone any action, the board postpone any action on this matter until, I believe it's ten October, would be the second board meeting in October. So I guess that's something you can take into consideration.
Well, I think while we have, sure, while, while we have the public hearing going on, I think we should still get some information into the record here. And I think we can start by, maybe you, you can give us a recap of the planning commission's, what they, what they did, and they, I believe, according to what I saw here, there was unanimous recommendation to move forward with this.
Talking about the city of Morehead?
No, I'm talking about the Clay County Planning Commission, and then maybe you can address the city planning commission.
So where is Mark, when you need him?
And we'll, we'll get to you when he's there.
Give me just a second, hopefully this will come up.
Well, while you're doing that, then, if the applicants are here, do you want to come up to the microphone?
We meet again?
Yes.
That's great.
Good morning.
I'm Brent Strand.
Ray Waller, Ben Luntz, and we've been working, you know, with him as far as the extension
part, and yes, things went very well at the Clay County Planning Meeting, it was unanimous decision. What we have chosen to do and learned is that we, we're working more with the city now, and making sure that it's a seamless transition, you know, because it's, it's your call, but the city with their overlay, you know, I, we understand that. I know it's been going very well with the city. We did ask for the extension, because there's, you know, there's going to be another meeting, there are city council meetings coming up here on September twenty-fifth, and we've been with the city planning meeting, and that went well, and we're working with Christie, and I always get her name wrong, the city planner.
Boshowski.
Thank you, yes, and it's going, she's putting together a plan, we, we're willing to pay some specials, and that's been working through that also on the street. And so, no, it's going well, but we just didn't want to put anyone in a bind, be in the county versus the city again, so that's why we postponed, so we can, when we bring it here, it'll be ready to go. Any questions we can answer?
Well, I think if, you have any questions of the applicants at this point?
So the reason we're holding it is, you're waiting for Morehead to make up their mind what they want to do, is, I mean, what we do, you can still do with Morehead, then, I mean, say, say we approved it, that we'd go for the, if, if you guys would approve it today, we'd, we're all in, but.
I think, long story, short frank, is this, we, we don't want to leave any holes in it and have a question by you as the commissioners as to where the city stands. And I think by delaying this, you will have a better idea without anything formally maybe coming from the city, but intuitively, you guys will know where the city stands, because I think, because of the overlay situation, I think in this whole process, that was an issue for you folks as county commissioners. And that's why we wanted to delay this, because I think when you, when we're done working with city staff over there, and I've met with Christie, I've met with a number of city council people, from Joel Paulson to Brenda Elmer, and the new city manager, and I forget her name, I think you guys will see when we're done working with those folks, and we'll need a couple more weeks, where the city really does stand on the project, and that I think will help you in your decision. You guys ultimately make the call, but I just think that'll help. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Well, if we approve it, you can still go forward. I mean, or just, I mean, I don't know, I guess.
We're scared. I mean, to be honest, we're just going to get denied, and then we wait again. I mean, that's the long and the short of it. So, you know, we're going to, we want to kind of over-study for the test in this, this time, before you make a decision.
Okay. The, the last time, the last time this thing came around, it was rejected because the city was opposed to it, the overlay district.
Correct.
And it's, since there's, and I think that was the impetus to have a dialogue between the county and the city to get some of these, because your site wasn't the only site that the same issue could come up with, and so we wanted this dialogue to happen, and I think that's what came up with these tier issues that weren't around before. And, you know, I'm glad to hear that, that you're willing to wait, and I, and I certainly can understand your comments as far as, well, why don't, I think part of, I don't see the city of Morehead here for this public hearing. And if they, you know, if they still wanted to come, because this is a new hearing, this is redoing it all, and if Morehead was still opposed to it, I would have thought they should be here to, to talk about it. So, and quite frankly, the last time around in this process, it was the council members whose ward that, that you're closest to or affected by where this land is, they were opposed to it. And now I see where a council member whose ward it is made the motion to, to have it, through the Clay County Planning Commission, to have it removed. So, and I have, and it, so I, I don't see anybody here from the city of Morehead, at least during this public hearing process, who is arguing or contesting the, this again. So we'll see where it goes. The board has an option, and I think, you know, I think if the board's comfortable in acting on it today, that we would close the public hearing, am I correct?
Yes, if, if, I think, I think we should go through the public hearing, Tim should make his presentation.
Yes.
The applicants can add any comments that they wish to make, and if there's anybody else here that wishes to speak on the issue, they should be given an opportunity.
Right.
At that time, if this board wishes to make a decision today, we would close the public hearing and then have discussion and some sort of ultimate resolution on the matter. If the board alternatively wants to postpone any decision on this, we should not close the public hearing, we should adjourn the public hearing while it's still open to another date certain, and then we could have more discussion in public hearing on that day. So I think those are the two routes that this board could choose to take today.
Very good, thank you, Jenny. So I think with that, and maybe if you guys just want to, you don't have to stand there the whole time if you want, but you'll have an opportunity to come back up if you, Tim, do you want to, as suggested, then, can you briefly go, go through the request and the details of it?
Yes, this is the same request that is, that came to us previously. You can see where the property is located up there, it's in the green area, which is Urban Expansion District Tier One. The blue area is Urban Expansion Tier Two. Those tiers came about as, as a result of the last time this was in front of us, that there was some discussion amongst the city and the county that maybe we need to go back and look at the Urban Expansion District, and come to some resolution as to how things might be allowed in the Urban Expansion District. So we did, we spent about six or seven months doing that, city staff, county staff, some elected officials, the attorney's offices, we all worked out an Urban Expansion District that now had two tiers. Tier One is the area that falls into the twenty, I believe it's the twenty-year service area for the city of Morehead, where their services may be extended out there within the next twenty years. And the blue area, or Tier Two, is areas that are still in their growth area plans, but they are outside of a twenty-year service period. What's on the screen is what resulted from that. For the property that the applicants have brought forth, it didn't change anything. In the blue area, in Urban Expansion Tier Two, the, there was a change made that storage, warehousing, especially U Store, storage units could be allowed. Tier One, they were still not allowed. So as far as regulation is concerned, nothing has changed from the first time this was heard. And although there isn't anyone from Morehead here, and this was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting, the last thing that we got from the city of Morehead was a resolution saying they were not in favor. So anyway, that's the zoning districts that we're in. It's a parcel just under seven, or under eight acres, it's adjacent to the city of Morehead on Forty-sixth Avenue. The intent would be to use about a third of it and create U Store, storage facilities on the western end of it. This is the area we're talking about, the picture's a little bit blurry, but this is looking to the west of the proposed site, and we're just going to swing around. This is about where the proposed site starts, the Quonset is on the applicant's property. Since this was brought up the first time, there's been some additional development on the north side, some of the apartment buildings have been completed up here. In the city's growth area plan, the area that is proposed is circled in red, it's proposed for low-density residential, is what the city's growth area plan has it pegged up, and it's just the same. So, right now, like I said, the last thing we got from the city was, as part of the last go-around, was a resolution from the city saying they weren't in favor. We've had discussion with two city council persons in particular, that we need to rethink it again. And really, the only options for us right now, unless we, again, put it off and go back through the whole process of going into the Urban Expansion Districts and retooling what we have as uses there, the only real option available to the applicants is to remove the overlay district from the property. The underlying zoning there, ag general, would allow U Store, storage facilities to be constructed on the site if they were granted a conditional use permit. So, like I said, technically, nothing's changed. The regulation still says that it can't be there, that the use is not allowed there. That was after our process where the city and the county met, and we all concluded that, yes, the tiers were good, the uses were good, and now apparently they're not good.
Jenny, other question for you. I think Commissioner Haney stated that the Morehead Planning Commission discussed this issue recently, and I just want to make sure it's appropriate, because Jim serves on that. Planning Commission is a member of our county board, can he give us an update through this public hearing process on, on that?
Yes.
Do you care to share with us the action that the-
Yes, I believe that they recommended approval of conditional use permit so that this could take place on, at the Morehead Planning Commission last week.
Were you folks there?
They don't have the authority to grant a conditional use permit, because it's not in the city.
I think they recommended approval, recommended approval to the city council.
Is it, just, I know you, you, the applicants are back, they're head nodding yes, were you, were you at the public hearing?
Yeah, yes, we were very, very positive. Hundred percent, I would generally say.
All right.
The council people that represent that area, they're the ones you've had contact with?
There were two, council person Elmer and Carlson.
Paulson.
Paulson, excuse me.
And their, what's their take on it?
They're in favor.
Both in favor of the project. In fact, they did call a meeting together a few weeks ago with the applicants, and both Brian Berg and Morehead City, new city administrator, and legal from both Clay and Morehead, and, and kind of proposed the project again, and, and my concern was that we had just kind of vetted this process out, and, and thought that everyone is on board, and, and it is really the, and I don't know if it's because the, the development that's happened on the north side of the road, but the city really is, or the council people that represent that area are really in favor of it, saw it as a need, and, and really wanted to kind of come back to the drawing board. So it does kind of seem like we're here, there, everywhere, but- So it does kind of seem like we're here, there, everywhere, but that was their position.
You know, in, in regards to Moorhead's previous position, and that there's a, you know, a, a resolution on file and opposition to it, this is a new public hearing before us. It's a, it's a, basically a, a new request, and I still think if, if Moorhead still wanted to act on it, they still, just like anybody else who was either for or against and wanted to comment on this, should be here today to do it. You know, if, this is a new public hearing, and I'm, and I'm gonna kind of go on the comments that I've heard here today, that it seems that there's been a lot of work and mutual understanding and cooperation on this, and the fact that the applicants are willing to deal with the specials, which was part of the city's argument all along, was that the infrastructure needs weren't in place, and, and that was part of the reasoning why I then supported the city's position before. And, so anyway, I've said my point, and, do we have anybody else for or against this who would like to speak in the public? Any final comments from the applicants?
Just that, you know, as far as...
Why don't you come up to the microphone if you would please?
As far as working with the city, we also have agreed to easements for any future sewer and water, and any future access roads that might be needed. Because of Highway Seventy-Five, DOT doesn't want any more access than they need. So, you know, we're, it's been going very well. Christie's been excellent to work with, and, and we've been working with her, so.
Very good, thank you. All right, so I, we've kind of got a situation here where I, I take it the applicants, if, if, if we were to vote against this, they would just as soon delay this until, till October. But obviously, so we have, we have a decision to make if we wanna recess this public hearing until October, or if you're satisfied with what you've heard today and wanna act on it, that's the board's decision.
I just wanna make a couple comments. This has been, because I serve on the Clay County Planning Commission, I've seen this presentation several times over the last few years at that and this board. Part of the reasons I heard over the years why this has been denied really have been addressed in a way that they weren't previously. The easements, the possible use of services, which this project necessarily wouldn't need, but assessments, they're all things that, that really are in motion and really have been discussed in a way that they weren't even touched upon before, and, and I think, you know, I, I voted to support this last time, and I think having those issues addressed gives me even more confidence in, in what this project would be. But also, to clarify, a motion to remove this overlay today isn't a motion to support the project or approve the project. It still needs to go through the proper channels at the Planning Commission, and, and I think any discussion that would happen further would only benefit when that presentation comes to the Planning Commission.
I'll move to close the hearing. Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all's the same, we have a request before us. What's the board's issues?
I don't think it moves to remove the overlay.
We have a motion to remove the overlay and a second. We need for a discussion.
Still have to pass on a four-fifths vote.
Okay, all, let's, let's go with a roll call vote then, please.
I'll go just with discussion too.
Okay.
I mean, I look at, we got, I read in the paper, we've got thirty-nine thousand units of apartment houses and stuff like that. If you live in apartment houses, what do you need? You need parking space, and you need storage.
No question.
You know, and what, if you, the picture that he showed is full of apartment houses, and I wouldn't doubt it more that annexes, there's gonna be apartments to this outside too. So what better utilization of this land, and I just feel that's what the, these people, if you're gonna keep allowing apartment houses, you're gonna have to allow storage spaces to for, so. And I think they don't want storage spaces five, six miles out of town somewhere.
I think these people, here, these applicants are business people, and they, they obviously know there's a need, or they wouldn't be doing it.
Yes.
And the, the need is gonna come from our citizens, so. Glenn, would, uh, would you call for a roll call vote, please?
Tammy?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
All right, that is, meets the criteria for four-fifths vote. The, the application has been agreed to. We're good to go, from our standpoint, anyway, so.
Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. And thank you for your cooperation in this long process, and we're glad you're doing business in Clay County. We've always, we've always liked that part of it. It was just the getting through the political piece that sometimes is difficult. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Okay, staffing request, Kathy. So, you're here on a couple of things. The first one is a case aid position.
I was on the back end of these things that he handed out.
Oh, it's mine. I'm sorry.
Is that your presentation?
Oh, it's just so like, what's your Jerry? It's just so I have to...
Let's see if you can do it without your notes.
I don't...
All right, well, good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. This is Leslie, with me and...
Good morning, Leslie.
Good morning.
With your notes.
With your notes. Now that you read that, I don't have anything to say. We are requesting to fill a Point Six Case Aid Position for our Child and Teen Checkup Outreach Program. On the agenda information sheet, it gives you the description of what the goal is and what the case aid role is in connecting families to, for their screenings. And then the funding piece is below that, we have the grid, the gradient step for the case aid position. The Twenty-One-O-One-Six is an annual salary for the Point Six, however, that did not include the benefits. And if I can read there in sheet, the benefits, the salary and benefits is the Thirty-four Three Seventy-Nine.
Yep.
Sorry, you don't have my cheaters with me? So, so our, I will have Leslie talk a little bit about the need, and so you can understand the request.
On August seventeenth, I received an email from the Department of Human Services that the program was increasing the, the periodicity, and that just means the frequency that families need to receive notification and aid for getting medical and dental services. So what, what they've done prior to this, the periodicity schedule is very simple, it just looks like this, it tells us what age somebody needs to have a checkup. So what they have done is added a thirty-month checkup to the periodicity, and then after age six, it was just on even birthday years that children would receive notification that they were due for a checkup. But the state has increased that to an annual physical, because this is what the American Association of Pediatricians is recommending. So what this means for the staff that work in outreach is that we have a lot of children that are involved in the program in the first five years of their life, and adding notification to those families means that we have to, and you can kind of see by that list I gave you, that we send them reminder letters. We are also required to call and to text those families with information as they request. Adding the thirty-month checkup means that we will have five hundred and seventy-seven more contacts that we have to make in 2018 than we did now. And adding all of those odd birthday letters and phone calls and texts means that we will have one thousand three hundred and forty-four more contacts with families. It, it doesn't sound like it's very much, but we're, we're, we're talking that when we try to call these families, it takes at least two times to get through to be able to talk to them. We have a database that we have to enter all of the information into. If a person is having difficulty finding a doctor or a dentist to serve their family, we make those connections. Sometimes people are very nervous about contacting doctors, so we will go ahead and make the appointments for them, work with social services or their health plan to get transportation set up for those appointments. And we also have a large number of families that need interpreters, and we work with the health plans and the clinics to get interpreter services in place for those checkups. So it's, it's a labor-intensive job, and when we start increasing the number of clients that we have to serve, my current staff can't, can't manage that load, so that's why we're asking for a Point Six Case Aid.
Are you, I'm just looking at the number of children on Medicaid. Is it, this is health, private healthcare for Medicaid eligible children. Are you telling me that we've got, you said there's a addition of thirteen forty-four? So how many kids have we got on Medicaid eligible?
In 2018, I'm contracting to serve eight thousand four, four children.
In Clay County?
Yeah, just to...
That are Medicaid eligible?
It's right on the bottom of that information.
If I would have kept reading, huh?
If you look, each year, starting in 2015, because we write contracts with the state for two years every time, in 2015, contracted for five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. We're over eight thousand now that we're contracting to serve. And these numbers represent only the children that stay in the program for a minimum of ninety days. We also have to serve children if they're in and out of the county, say through Churches United, or, you know, when parents come to look for jobs, we serve them also, but their numbers aren't included in the numbers that we contract for. And you can see too, even just in the number of letters that, that we're sending out, we're only, this data's through the end of August, so two-thirds of the way through the year. In 2017, we have seven thousand three hundred and seventy-one kids eligible, and already this year, we've sent out eighty-four hundred letters and reminders to families to get in for checkups.
And the funding, the, our total amount for 2018, the two hundred and twelve thousand zero fifty-three, we receive fundings from the federal down to the Department of Human Services, and that is based on numbers of children that we need to serve.
So the two hundred and twelve thousand, is that what you said?
Correct, yeah.
Does that includes the, the translators?
We don't pay for the interpreters. Those are paid through, through the health, the health benefits.
So postage and stuff, I'm, I'm just looking at the postage costs for eighty-four hundred.
Yes.
Is that included in the grant?
Yes, correct.
Postage, printing, the letter, half the money for the ink cartridges to paint, print things, but, yeah.
I'll make a comment.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Point Six Case Aid.
We have a motion to approve, sir, a second.
Frankly demanding, sir, a second.
I just have a comment. As someone who brought in kids for those child and teen checkups at that office, I really appreciate the work that you do, and there are people in this community that need that, and I think that it's, it goes, it's like money well spent.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If all's the same, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the staffing request for Min Choices, and Kathy, you're gonna stay up here, and we're gonna have Rhonda and Holly coming up, and... Okay, Rhonda, who's gonna start? Rhonda, Kathy?
Okay, I can, I can get us started. In your packet, we included a PowerPoint labeled Min Choices. This is a, a topic we brought to the Personnel Issues Committee a couple weeks ago, maybe, maybe two weeks ago already. And so we're, are here to talk through about this particular program and our staffing needs in this program. So I think we'll just start out by talking a little bit about what Min Choices is. As you can see, because social services and public health are here, we both deliver this assessment service and work jointly on this particular service area. So Jamie and Holly are our supervisors, Jamie in Public Health and Holly in Social Services, that administer this program, so we're gonna let our experts talk about Min Choices and give you some examples of what a Min Choices assessment is. So who would like to start?
I'll start. Min Choices basically is an assessment, which is getting to know a person, asking a lot of questions about what their needs are and what their wants are, to determine which program would be most appropriate to keep them in their home safely and more cost-effectively than a long-term care. And so that's basically what it's about. In public health, we, case manager assess the over sixty-five population, and then also those that are at risk for hospitalization, meaning that if we move them home, it would be more cost-effective than, than being, staying in the hospital, because that's the only level of care. So that's typically what we see as a referral comes through our intake at Social Services after a hospitalization, or maybe a short-term nursing home stay. Something happened, a person has been, maybe for twenty, thirty years, been retired and managing fine, and then they end up with a chronic health condition. And so they will maybe do a short-term nursing home stay, which would be covered by Medicare, but then now wanna go back into the community. So that assessment is to help them determine what's safe, what is most cost-effective, and help them to move back into the community. It might be their home, might be an apartment, might be an assisted living facility. Do you wanna talk about the disability as well?
Yes, so in my unit, Social Services, we manage those programs for people under the age of sixty-five with a disability. So, you know, kind of like Jamie explained, same scenario comes in for our intake, we send an assessor out to do the assessment. Min Choices determines eligibility for multiple programs. The assessor comes back to our office, and we review it with a inter-agency disciplinary team and make a decision. So some examples that we may see with people under the age of sixty-five that we serve could be anything from a young child, you know, family contacting our agency saying, my child has Down Syndrome, I'm looking for support for my child as a pro and, you know, get older and are an adult. So in that situation, we connect them with the case manager through the Min Choices assessment, and that case manager would align services with that child to continue work on skills that they can use as an adult. Another scenario would be, you know, a situation where a parent who is a full-time working member in the community... member in the community is in an accident, is now paraplegic or quadriplegic in the nursing home or in the hospital, has surgeries, returns to rehab, and then needs supports to come back to live at home with the family. So that, again, would be a scenario where we could provide some support to modify the home or to help support that person back at home with their family.
So the Min Choices assessments, the work that our staff do, is funded both federally, 50% federally and about 50% state. And then if services, if they're eligible for services based on that assessment, oftentimes they're put on a Medicaid waiver. So it's funded under medical assistance, both federal and state funds. So most of the work that is actually done in Holly's unit and a lot in public health as well, I kind of equate to, it's a medical service. They're out doing an assessment, just like a physician might do when somebody reports to the doctor's office. They can bill for that activity. If there's a need for services, they can authorize that for medical reimbursement and funding. So it's really administering medical programs.
Excuse me, now you say it's funded by the state and the federal. Are you saying that the person's funded by the state or the service?
The services.
But the person is funded by the county?
No.
Oh.
No, no. The individuals that receive services are on Minnesota Medical Assistance or a healthcare plan, and so then when we provide services to that individual, we can bill those health plans.
So the case aid person is also funded by the state?
Here, we're talking about social work position and public health. The case aid is next. So here, we're requesting the approval of one social worker and one public health nurse to continue to manage the Min Choices referrals. We've seen an increase in our referrals over the last few years. We are anticipated doing over 2,000 Min Choices assessments. It used to be that we had different assessment tools that we would use depending on the individual's needs coming to our agencies. It's now one universal assessment, Min Choices. The length of time has tripled it takes for the workers to do those assessments from what was previously, so that's what's causing the issue. The time it takes to do the assessments and the number of assessments that we're having to do. Both public health and social services earn reimbursements for those assessments. Ours comes through this, what's called the Social Service Time Study, and public health comes through the Local Collaborative Time Studies. We both earn them in different ways. And the slide, let's see, slide four shows you our actual Min Choices revenue that we received for 2016, what we are projecting to earn for 2017. That level of income would stay at that level for 2018. And we project that when we can add staff, and in our service area, I think we've shown this over the years, that when we can add staff to equalize out the workload, we actually can bring revenue in to pay for that position. We've demonstrated that in our waiver programs, and we've demonstrated that with Min Choices thus far. So we anticipate by adding an additional social worker, we can increase our cost pool and therefore increase the formula and the revenue we receive and provide better services to folks that are calling our agency and need assessments. So we're not requesting any additional funds. We would be requesting the position to be approved, and we could actually add that position this year. Our revenue has come in higher than what I had actually budgeted for 2017, so we will have the revenue to support it for this year and then on going into 2018.
Commissioner, what's your?
Thank you, Rhonda, for including the revenues. My question is, and I understand that the revenues will maybe be for the expenses, but that's a hard decision to make when I don't have the expenses for it, as to it. I mean, so it looks like just adding one is gonna be 75 apiece in revenues, but when I don't have the expenses, it's hard to.
Sure, for the position, you mean?
Well, for all of these, you know. I mean, to hear that the revenues are higher than what we've budgeted is a good thing, I understand, 'cause you've got such a high caseload, but, you know, I don't know what the expenses are on the other side either. We have the expenses for the two positions.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's a good point. We did, in a previous PowerPoint, we did have the expenses that we had for the positions that have been approved thus far for Min Choices, and we took that out to just be a little cleaner.
I think, Commissioner Campbell, you might remember that from our meeting, we had those expenses in.
The social worker and the public health nurse.
But, yeah, we.
For the positions that we.
For the positions that we, yeah.
The one thing with the Social Service Time Study, on the social service side, we actually have four Social Service Time Study revenues that we earn. This one is called LTSS, Long Term Services and Supports. We earn time study money for Rule 25, medical health assessments. We earn revenue on MA administration, and the fourth one is for EE, for foster care. So they all come in, and I generally look at those time study revenues together and how they increase over time. They've substantially increased primarily because of this particular service area. So we wanted to isolate this service area for this discussion, because that's how the money is earned. But, yeah, we didn't include the revenue. We have, a new social work position would be approximately 69,000. That's the current 2017 salary grid. That would not include any bonus that you might approve for next year. But, again, we are confident that the revenues will come in to support the position as it has in the past.
And the public health nurse was 75 average for the public health nurse. New hire.
Any other comments, questions? I know the, so, did you incorporate these requests and associated revenues in your budget request?
Well, we had made some adjustments. I had originally put them in as the new, as a new request, but I think Lori took that out, and we were gonna just handle it in this way, because it was a zero net for the position.
So she, so they're not in the budget, but neither is the revenue?
I don't, no, correct.
Commissioner Campbell? Go ahead, you want?
One thing the four of us have been working on is a plan with the Department of Human Services also to move towards a full Min Choices implementation. We are still doing some of the assessments in the old form of paper because of staffing. And so we have a plan, and I, we're in 2018, I believe, is basically, and we report to them quarterly on how many of those Min Choices we're able to complete. And they understand the situation of staffing, but that is one of the things we've been working on also.
I just wanna make it a little editorial here about these types of requests when they come in, and I think I can probably speak for a vast majority of county commissioners throughout the state of Minnesota, that we certainly understand the work that you're providing is in the best interests of communities. As county commissioners, we are also somewhat always cautious of what the state and federal government do. As we all know, we are an arm of the state county service. That's, makes us different from city councils and those types of places, because we are an arm of the state, and we are the ones who fulfill their obligations for them. And what really concerns me is when we bring on people, and you say that the revenues are here today, but we have no guarantee that the revenues are gonna be there tomorrow. And it gets to be a battle then over, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna fund it? Is the state legislature gonna fund it like they're supposed to, or are they gonna say, "Well, no, we've done enough now, or now the counties have to do it?" And that's the dilemma that we're in in these situations. And, you know, we've, I think we've always taken the position that, you know, if the grant money is available, that's fine, but if the grant money goes away, you know, but then you're still put back in the same position that now it's the county's fault, because we can no longer fulfill the needs. Because at some point in time, you see it from, you know, you gave a classic example about keeping people in their home. Well, you know what, high property taxes don't help keep people in their homes either, if one's on fixed income. So we, so we're in that dilemma as well. So we just need to always be mindful of that.
And this program area is one that we cannot contract out. The counties have to do it, and you have to be a certified assessor to complete the assessment, so the workers have to go through, it's how many hours? Forty hours. It's like.
I think the issue becomes is how long, if somebody has to wait to have the process done. And what you're saying is our people are waiting too long because of the demands.
Correct.
And that's, that's the, that's the issue that we're up against here.
I did, maybe to a little bit answer Commissioner Mondo's question, I did take a look at Holly's unit, which would include these Min Choices assessors, 'cause I was curious to look at what are all of her staffing costs for all of her staff, including Holly herself, and then what is the revenue her particular unit generates for their service? And the actual cost, what for all of their salaries and benefits was a little over 1.3 million, and the revenue was a little over 1.7. And I was surprised, I hadn't taken that close of a look at it before. So it really just validated to me that the work that they do is so, that's why I equated it to that medical field, where it's so billable in terms of the process. Some of the areas bring in revenue over and above the costs of the staff, and some not as much, but they balance each other out, and so I was surprised at that analysis.
If I, Rhonda, if I could suggest this, because we're coming up on having to finalize our preliminary levy by the end of this month anyway, I still think, because it's a request, and it's something that this board would take action on, and it does still have to deal with 2018, that we do redo the line items within your budgets, proposed budgets for 2018, both for the expenditures and the revenues.
Well, absolutely.
And then we will, you know, my suggestion would be then is we will vote on that as part of the overall preliminary budget thing. Once, once that's done, you'll have a better understanding of whether or not, you know, I just, I don't like doing these things outside of the budget process. I think it's, in all honesty, it's unfair to every other department when we do something like this, so that's, that's what I'm suggesting that we do here, is go ahead and incorporate it. It sounds budget-neutral to us, I think that's very important. You know, so, I don't know, unless other board members have something, a different consideration, I think that's the way we should do it.
That really doesn't delay that much for you, does it? I mean, because we have to come up with that answer by the end of this month.
For the preliminary levy? Yeah, I think that was kind of the logic in taking it out is because we, it is budget-neutral, and we felt that we would wanna move forward sooner rather than later, but certainly, we certainly could go back.
I would, I guess I would prefer that just to stay consistent with all other departments that we've asked.
Sure.
Right, any other comments on that, or are we okay with that? All right, so let's move on to our next one then, and that is the staffing request.
Okay, that second one is for a case aid, and this is also overburdened in Holly's unit, in our disability service area. And what we're asking for is, the position is on grade 12, step one, it's a little over $57,000. It's a case aid to support our disability service waiver area. So currently, we have seven social workers who provide waiver case management for folks with disabilities. This is children all the way up to death kind of services. They serve over 400 folks in that area, and what's happening is they're, the social workers can bill for their case management time, and they are just overburdened with a lot of administrative work that is not billable. And we would like to hire a case aid to remove some of that administrative work so that they can provide more time with the clients on their caseload, thus increasing their billable opportunities. We do have a case aid like this in one of our other waiver programs, CADDY, and we have proven that to be an effective way to increase that revenue. In our CADDY program, the Medicaid, we, our case aid actually can bill for some of her time as well, and she brings in a little over $36,000 in revenue for her position. In the disability area, the state is working on, with the federal government, on getting approval for our case aid to bill, just like in the other program, but that's not approved yet. But even regardless of that, taking these administrative functions off of the social workers so they can increase their billing, increase their time with clients is a good thing. So, again, this would be a budget-neutral position based on the way we're setting it up, and so this is another position that had been taken out of that new request area for the 2018 budget, with the same logic.
And again, I wanna re-explain and maybe give a different reason why I say this should be in the budget, because once it's approved through the budget process, it becomes a line item that's comparable to something going forward, both the revenues and the expenditures, because moving forward, when we do, when we're doing 2018 budget, we're comparing it to what we had budgeted for 2017. And if those numbers just somehow aren't in a budget, how do they become part of what you compare to? Not only do you have to compare to what you budgeted the previous year, but then what the actual was. And if they're not budgeted in line items there, it can be somewhat deceiving to somebody looking at it, trying to read it. So that's my reasoning why I'm suggesting this, so. So again, I would, you know, I would think that we should do the same with this as we just did with the previous. Unless a board member wants to act separately, that's your choice.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a, this has come up before in the past, when it's approved in the budget, the department heads have to come back then to the board to request to actually fill that position? Some people have said, "Well, it's already in my budget, I'm gonna go ahead and hire for it." Just wanna eliminate some of the confusion sometimes.
I think the board, even though it's in the budget, I still think there needs to be final action on it, because I think quite some time ago, the board established a position that all new hires had to be reviewed, and it would still be a new hire, but then part of the process would be that they would say that it was in the budget process, and it was approved of the budget process. That helps then. But, you know, there's, there's still, even though it's approved in the budget process, the dollar amounts, any new hire, and Darren, part of why we do that is during the course of the year, there can, and especially in social services, there's things that are just unanticipated and major, can have major impacts to a budget. And so sometimes what we previously might have done, we might have to alter that based on consequences of other areas.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
That's the reason why we've done that.
Okay, great.
I hope that answers your question.
I just wanted to clarify it so that we're good across the board.
Well, the intent, the intent through the budget process is to allow those dollars, but they still need to be.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
All right. All right, so I think with that, then, Rhonda, maybe again, if you can work with Brian and Lori on both these requests today, to have them shown as line items in the budget.
Okay, very good.
Both the expenditures and the revenues.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we are just about back on time here. I'd like to just take a three-minute break, and I know our goal is to still be done by, I know we have a couple of commissioners that have other issues that are obligations, so we can break that. A three-minute break. Darren, I don't see Ringo here yet, so I think we'll, so let's move forward with yours and hopefully. So let's move forward with yours and hopefully we can get through these.
Who's here?
All right, um, we have our 2018 insurance renewal information, and we have Darren and Jennifer here to go through with us and then give a report based on recommendations from the insurance committee. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. Um, we had our insurance committee meeting last Tuesday, uh, so two of the commissioners were, were involved with that as well. We got a lot of this information. Um, I'm going to let Jennifer go through the renewal. But just to let you know that we have had, normally we have a couple of insurance committees a year, maybe one or two per year. Um, already this year, we've had, what, four or five to try to figure out what we're going to do with the insurance long-term. As part of that, we've also set up a, a smaller committee to kind of dive deep into some of the issues and try to get some, um, thinking outside the box on what we can do to, uh, long-term to, to eliminate some of these higher cost deductibles and plans. So, um, just for your information that that is in the works, we identify that that is a problem in the future. And we're not looking just one or two years out. We're looking five, 10 years out of where we want to get to eventually, so.
I, I do, I do want to comment that all of the, um, all of the different, various employees that are involved with this are very much on board and agree that, uh, that we need to come up with some different solutions to this, so.
Yep, that's, uh, that's actually very refreshing because on the insurance committee, we have, uh, every union representative with their stewards. And we've had a lot of positive feedback on, you know, making some of these changes that have been suggested to see if we can get, you know, um, lower plan, lower deductibles, lower premiums. And so it is, uh, it has been, I think, positive meetings that we've had so far with the union groups.
I agree. All right.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and give it to my left-hand lady here.
Good morning. Thank you. Um, in regard to what I put in your packet, it was simply the premiums increases for next 2018 based on what we received from our providers. So the first one is the health insurance rates. We did receive a 14.9% increase for 2018, which is a bump from the 1.7 we received for 2017. Uh, when we reviewed the renewals, most of that is attached to our high claims reporting. We had 1.4 million dollars removed from our experience for 2017 in regard to high claims because of the stop loss that we have at 200,000. And, and then for 18, we only had 404,000 removed from our experience. So the need for our expected claims, um, in 2017 was only $57,000. And in 2018, it's over $500,000. So that's where the jump came from. Um, Lakes Country has indicated to us that they're looking at some different strategies in regard to trying to eliminate these ups and downs in our premiums. One of them being they've started statewide high case pooling. Um, so instead of just being our group, it's the, I think there's 14 co-ops. And putting that over the state to, to bring down some of those issues with the high cases. They indicated that there was an unprecedented amount of high cases in Lakes Country pool. This for 2018, so it wasn't just Clay County. Um, and then they're also bought stop loss at 500,000 through Blue Cross now. Um, so we still are sitting at the $200,000 stop loss where after that Lakes Country kicks in. And then once the $500,000 stop loss is hit, then Blue Cross kicks in. That really isn't a change for us, but what they're hoping is that some of these new strategies will assist in these peaks and valleys. This is the first year they've adopted these strategies, so we'll have to see how they play out. The increase for the health insurance then results in the increase to the county contribution to $1,270, up from the 1,118 for 2017. The formula for that, of course, is the continuation of giving 50% of that. Increase to the Triple Gold Family Plan is passed on to the premiums and 50% of that is passed on to the county contribution. So based on the number of contracts we have currently, that's in the budget cost of 722,000 approximately. A couple of items in regard to our plan designs. For the VIBA plans, the VIBA trust funding levels. For 2018, the VIBA HSA 3250 will be indexed, so the deductibles will rise. It'll go to 3375 for single, 6750 for family. The reason for that is that plan does include fourth quarter carryover, as does all of our plans. But the IRS has said that in order to continue with fourth quarter carryover in an HSA compliant plan, the minimum deductible had to go up by 25%. Um, and so that rose from 2,700 to 3375. So we certainly can remove the fourth quarter carryover and leave that plan as its current deductibles. However, fourth quarter carryover is the biggest benefit to employees on that particular plan because it's 100% co-insurance. So there's no co-insurance for them to pay after they've met their deductible. The insurance committee did recommend to leave the fourth quarter carryover in and index that deductible. In turn, that would result in looking at indexing the funding levels for the trust account attached to that. So we want to keep in line with the 50% of the deductible that we did when we put the plan in place. That was kind of the formula we used. That's where we got the 135 for single a month and the 270 for family per month. To keep that in line with the indexing, um, we would like to raise that from 135 for single to 140 per month and then the 270 for family per month to 280. That was one of the recommendations by the committee. And also we decided when we brought the 3250 in, that every two years, we would look at the funding levels for the VIBA trust accounts if their deductibles weren't indexed for inflation. We have been told that the VIBA trust on the 2600, the deductibles, excuse me, for that plan will never be indexed because it's not HSA compliant, so those are never going to move. Um, so the, the, it goes back to the committee to decide if we want to increase the VIBA trust funding levels for that particular plan, since they've never been increased since it came to us in 2007. We decided at this point that we would like to look at bringing that in line to 50% of the deductible again, which increases the single from $100 a month to 110 and the family from 200 to 220. We're going to be looking at that a little bit differently later on, but for now, we'd like to bring those VIBA trust funding levels in line with the same formula. Um, so that will be part of the final recommendation that we talk about later. There are a couple of other items that come down through the renewal bulletin from Blue Cross that affect some of our stuff. One of them is a couple of our, one of our non-grandfather plans, the only one we have is the 3250. There are a couple of changes that are going to happen with that plan. They're removing some lifestyle drugs, which is, um, some different drugs. Weight loss medications, cosmetic altering medications, those types of things will be removed from the plan, but only for that particular plan. However, we, there is a buy-up option that we could add that was back in to that at a higher premium. Um, the committee had recommended that we just, um, let those lifestyle drugs be removed. It's not that they won't be covered, um, they'll just be covered in a different way. Um, and then there's also an over-the-counter benefit that will be removed from the non-grandfathered plan, which is the VIBA 3250 or 3375. Um, but we don't really have a choice on that. Um, years ago, the over-the-counter drug benefit was that you could have certain over-the-counter drugs with a prescription that could be, um, covered at 100%. Now they're finding that there are more generic drugs out there that are cheaper, um, covered under the RX benefit. And so they're going to remove that benefit from the plan. And then there are some things that they're adding in as well that will benefit our plans too. So in regards to the health insurance, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Again, as Darren said, that the insurance committee has been meeting regularly, almost on a monthly basis at this point, to determine how to make this a long-term strategy and how we're going to see things going forward. We still have the Cadillac plan looming in the distance, which is 2020. One of the things the committee is looking for support for is the Triple Gold Plan. There are many things with the Triple Gold Plan that are making it very expensive to maintain. It is the highest costing plan per month per member at 686 dollars, which is almost $200 more than the lowest, the highest VIBA plan. And it also, under that plan, the plan pays 91% of all the claims. With the VIBA 3250 and the VIBA 2600, it pays 74%. So considering those factors together, it is the highest costing plan. So what the committee is looking at doing is sending information or memos to the, to the union groups to ask them to not allow any more new members on that plan as of 1/1/18. Obviously, we'll have to have their agreement, and so that's why the memos will be distributed. And then we are also looking at in the future to sunset that plan. We would like to see that somewhere in the realm of 2019, the end of that year, 12/31/19, because of the Cadillac tax coming out to 2020, that is going to affect that plan. And so that's kind of the steps that we're taking. So we just want to have the board aware of that in regard to the movement. Uh, we'd like to bring those memos back to the board, I believe, after they've been agreed to by the union and if we need to take action at that point, or else it'll be brought back to the insurance committee. So any questions on the, the health insurance portion of it?
All right, I think if there's none, I think why don't we, um, just approve what we need to on there and then we'll get into the other dental and those.
Okay, so in, in regard to that, the motion really encompasses everything on here. There's not a lot changing for dental, it's simply the premiums. Um, all of our other premiums remain the same. The other thing changing is select account or administrative rate will go from $2.11 per member to $2.95 per member. So other than that, there's nothing changing with any of the other insurances. So the recommendation needed by the board today would be to approve the renewals with the premiums and the increase of the county contribution as provided in the current contracts.
So that would cover the rate increases as well as the, um, proposed or recommended deductibles and VIBA contributions.
Correct.
And also the grandfather.
Yes, we also.
Yeah, I wonder, let's do that separate.
Okay.
I think that should just, to be, cover ourselves, I think that should be a separate.
Good, that sounds good.
What's the board's wishes?
I'm going to approve.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I think, I think the, I, I think the, one of the key things that, uh, the committee is doing and they're recognizing the, what's really, um, driving some of the overall costs up are that Triple Gold policy. Uh, and the insurance committee recognizes that we're trying to come up with, it's very similar to not too long ago, what, to what we had to do with the double gold, and that was get it out of here. Uh, and that's what we did, and that's going to be the goal here, but we need to work along with our employees to have them understand there's better options out there than that, so. Okay, any other comments? You, I'm the insurance committee, okay?
Good to go.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, sign. Motion carried. Now if we could have a motion to continue the non-grandfather status on the VIBA HSA.
So move.
And the grandfather status for the other three.
And the grandfather status on the other plans, okay.
That's my motion.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried.
So the one other item that I had was, we have been asked many times at the insurance committee level, why nationwide is our only deferred comp option? I couldn't find anything limiting us to nationwide only. We did look it up, other options, but one of the one that made the most sense was to start offering deferred compensation options through the Minnesota State Retirement System. Um, I did poll a few other counties and most of them do offer that as a secondary option. So nationwide will remain in place, but the deferred comp options through Minnesota State Retirement System will be in addition to that. They have both a pre-tax and a Roth as well to offer. So I would need a motion to, um, sign a contract in regard to implement that. Um, and then we will invite the rep from the Minnesota State Retirement System to come in and educate employees as well as have individual meetings to assist them in signing up if they're interested.
And that was also recommended by the.
That has also been recommended by the insurance committee.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. Anything else we need to do, Jennifer? Have you got it all covered? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, uh, we need a motion to go into closed session for union negotiations. Some of, is that a motion and a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. We are now in closed session. All right, all right, well, uh, we're going to reconvene from our closed session. Uh, and what we have left on our agenda this morning is, uh, the remainder of our committee reports. We'll go with Commissioner Wayland.
Okay, let's see, I had, uh, we met with the city of Moorhead last week about, uh, uh, what we're going to do in terms of the diversion and land acquisitions, uh, uh, in the future. And we had pretty good discussion. I think one of the recommendations is to come up with some sort of a committee that's made up of council people and commissioners to review, you know, the negotiations and offers and how that all works out. But we'll be looking at that more in the future and come up with a plan. And then I'm sure the chair will appoint some people to, to deal with that. Uh, and then we had, already had Steve here, we had, uh, Detention Advisory Committee. And we had a lot of discussion there about, um, the temporary facility in Cass County that they're offering. Everybody was very supportive of that. And then we had a lot of discussion about the expansion plans for, uh, the detention center. And, uh, I, I thought it was very positive and, uh, uh, there wasn't really any opposition from any of the other counties. And, uh, everybody understood that, uh, you know, everybody would be expected to pay their share of the expansion costs. And, um, we also talked about, we're going to need a new cooperative agreement. You know, when we get to that point with a new facility, and everybody seemed to understand that and was supportive of that. And even to the point where we talked about, uh, we'll probably be coming out with a new plan for sharing costs in the new facility, so. That was it for me.
Okay, Commissioner Gross?
Okay, we had buffer, which Jenny has already talked about, uh, talked about the ordinance there. Also, we were looking at, I've asked the question why WildRise is not involved in that. They have a meeting tomorrow morning. I plan to go up there and just discuss it a little bit further, to see if they want to be involved in our committee meetings. After that, I also, the next day I had, or the day before, a building committee. We got Juvenile that wants the, wants more space in the Family Service Center. We got Provation that wants more space, or they want some space, they're looking for space where they're going to be at because they're not included in it, you know. I guess they were concerned about, uh, why they weren't involved with discussions when we did the law court.
They were.
They were involved and I think we cleared that up, you know, but it's, um.
The problem is at the time, they didn't bring any money to the table for construction.
Had a lot to do with it.
They can tell us that.
And I guess, you know, we're, we're looking at more space at the Family Service Center this morning. And when we abolished the water department or whatever it is, the water plant, uh, I mean, that's going to free up some space already, you know. But they're going to discuss with extension, with head, head start and all those, whether we can move something around. Cause there is some space in second floor that's being freed up, so they have to do some moving around over there because there's, uh, demand for more space. That was it.
Very good. Commissioner Ene?
On Tuesday, I attended the insurance committee, which we already spoke about. And then that evening, I attended the city of Moorhead Planning Department, which we also spoke about. And then on Thursday, I attended the Child Mental Health LLC meeting. And, um, let's see, they elected the chair and the co-chair for the next year. On, uh, Thursday, then I, let's see, where am I? I, I went to the Campus Improvement Meeting with Commissioner Gross. They talked about prioritizing space needs in the FSC. And, uh, then later that afternoon, I attended the Governance Board for the Clay County Collaborative. And Todd Cameron from the Yulin-Hittodoll School District was there. And the action that took place was, uh, we decided to allow the out-county school districts to maintain the truancy program up to the county attorney level themselves. So that, uh, they wanted to do that, they're doing it much better when they have boots on the ground right there. So that, that took place. And, uh, I think that's my whole report.
Very good, thank you. Um, last Tuesday, uh, because of the holiday, um, well, we had the insurance committee meeting in the morning, which, uh, has been well-covered with the actions today. In the afternoon, we did have our jail construction meeting. And, um, there's nothing really new to report. Everything seems to be staying on schedule. Uh, we should be, uh, coming up pretty soon with a report to all of you on the boiler issue. We should be coming up pretty soon with a report to all of you on the boiler issue. I think you guys even might have heard a little bit about that through your building project, about some of the potential options that we have there. And I think there's going to be some price issues to look at there. And then as Commissioner Wayland said, we did meet the Minnesota members of the Diversion Authority, met, and we did discuss. We went over property acquisition rules and responses, and what's going on in Cass County, and how we handle it in Minnesota. Of course, all of that, right now, we have a little bit of time on that because of the current injunction. There's not a, you know, with that, we'll have to just wait and see on what transpires there, so. But we will be, and we are still going to be working out what a plan would be. And this would be in terms of, even from the standpoint of, if you have a property owner who might not be willing to let us on even for soil borings, how you're going to deal with that. And then it can even lead to other things down the road for property acquisition. And, you know, so we'll have discussions with, you know, a lot of it's in your district, Commissioner Mojo, so we'll be talking to you a lot about that if you want to work with that. And then juvenile detention. Again, the focus was on the short term and long term. And as Commissioner Wayland said, it was very, very much, there was a, there was, the members really, they really took time to say thank you to Cass County, too, for, they were pleasantly surprised to see the amount of financial commitment on the part of Cass County into that facility, so. All is moving forward there. And like I said, we're going to be looking at an entirely new cooperative service agreement. And we basically gave the message that because of this expansion, everybody's going to be asked to be in it and make a long-term commitment to continue being, participating counties, to make this, make sure finances are covered. Juvenile detention, we met prior to that, too, and before the big meeting, the day before we met to go over with Steve, how he was going to do his presentations. And then Commissioner Mojo reported in the Clay County Joint Powers meeting. That was our last Thursday. And that was pretty much, primary focus was on getting ready for the intergovernmental retreat. That's all I have. Darren, do you have anything to add?
Just a quick, Tuesday, I was at the insurance committee meeting as well, which has already been covered. Wednesday, we had the deputies' negotiations, which we just talked about. Thursday, we had a managers' meeting, which was actually out at the landfill in Highway's new building. We got a demo from Deacon, our new K-9 officer, which was pretty impressive. 1:00 on Thursday, had an unemployment hearing that was fruitless because the person did not show up. So we won that case, I guess, by default. Friday morning, Brian, Mike, and I had a conversation on the negotiations that we talked about today. And Friday afternoon, or Friday morning, had a wellness committee meeting to talk about some upcoming events. That's it.
All right, break?
Mayor Olazlo was ice skating social last weekend.
Yes.
People attended it. Also, I think we have to make up our mind on the St. Paul thing, if we can get our registration in early. I plan on going, so.
I think she has reserved rooms for all of us at this point.
I have.
What's the date on that again?
September 4th.
Okay.
Very good, okay, thank you.
All right.
Nothing, thank you.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.